Ben?
Yep. Please do, go ahead.
Um.
Because we don't have an organization yet. No one can direct you to do anything. You're on your own.
Yeah.
Until the organization, that's true. All right, proceed.
Okay. Um, in the Emergency Communications Center, um, you're probably already aware of this, but those employees are paid as though they're forty-hour-a-week employees and, um, they're actually paid one-twenty-sixth of an annual salary, um, where in reality, they work twelve-hour shifts and they work thirty-six in the first week and forty-eight in the second week. So, um, what Dominique and I, um, are recommending is that we convert those employees to an hourly rate because, um, it has always been a point of confusion. It's difficult for the employees to understand. Whenever they have a holiday in their short week or they work additional hours in their short week, which they often do, they're not paid for the first four because the first four really just brings them up to the forty and that's supposed to be built into their base salary. Um, so it's very confusing for the employees, very hard to automate a system to sort of recognize those things, and so we end up doing a lot of that by hand. Um, you know, what it, uh, results in is an increase to their stated hourly rate, uh, but what I've tried to do is create a spreadsheet that recognizes the frequency, and this is, um, just an assumption, but Dominique felt like they were reasonable assumptions, um, about how often they would work a holiday in their short week and how often they might have, um, be able to pick up a shift in their short week where they sort of lose that four-hour period. Um, what I end up with is an increase to the hourly rate of about two-and-a-half percent rather than five percent, which is what it is if you just take the annual salary and divide it by the number of hours they actually work when they work the thirty-six and forty-eight. Um, Dominique couldn't be here today because she was at a conference, but she has, um, introduced this idea to her employees last Wednesday at a meeting and she said it went, um, it went well, um, and, you know, in her other, um, positions where she's worked in other locations, um, it has been an hour-for-hour thing. So it's really what she understands and we just think it would, um, be a big benefit for us to move in that direction, not only from, um, making it clear to the employees on what they're getting paid, but it would also help us, um, automate things as we look toward the, um, employee self-service for time entry because they know the number of hours, times, the rate is what you get paid, where now that's not so much the case.
Can, I, I tried to sort through the spreadsheet that you sent us and I didn't, didn't answer the, the basic question I had, which was, can we estimate what the, the actual impact on the employees' pay would be at the end of some normal year, if there is such a thing? Is, is it likely to be?
Right.
No change, little change, positive change?
What I'm attempting to do, you know, is, is thread the, the eye of the needle in getting to what I feel is, is exactly neutral. Now, that's based on assumptions and so I imagine for some people it might go one, a little to one way or the other depending on how often, um, they have these occurrences in their short week, the thirty-six-hour week. But if you, um, look at the second page, um, what I've tried to do was show here in the green boxes that, um, their annual salary now, this was an example employee, this is the thirty-three, eight fifteen, and then if I go to the bottom and use the hour, the new hourly proposed rate of sixteen, six-six, six-three, the nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-six is the base hours. That's if they work nothing but thirty-six and forty-eight the whole time. And then I'm adding in the additional hours, which represent our estimation of how many times that four hours comes into play where they actually are working but not getting the additional hourly rate. In the new scenario, they would get the additional hourly rate. So you see that those added up equal the same thirty-three, eight fifteen. So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to is the, um...
But have they worked?
...neutral hourly rate.
But have they worked more hours to get to that number? That's what I couldn't tell you.
No.
It didn't appear that they had.
No. They wouldn't be working more hours. It's only, the, the only, um, if about it is, you know, how often does it really happen that they work the four additional hours in their first week? And so we had to make assumptions about that. There was just no, no getting around that, but...
Does, I guess, let me ask another question. Do you and Dominique feel that this, that this improves the situation enough from the clarity as well as an accounting standpoint that it's, it, it's worth the, uh...
We both feel like it's, it's, uh, very much worth it. I think there's some other changes that she might like to make policy-wise. I know one that she mentioned to me was, um, she would like to, um, make it so that when there's, someone is called back in that short week, um, that they actually are, get overtime from the first hour instead of getting that first four hours at straight time. Um, she's, you know, not when they sign up in advance for a shift, that would still be the four hours of straight time, but, you know, if she's in a situation where she needs, she's asking for a favor to somebody to take this shift and she'd like to, to be able to tell them it would be a time and a half. So, um, Allison and I, um, had talked about that a little, but we'd like to talk to her and, um, bring that forward in more of a policy, HR policy type.
And as far as we know, this, this doesn't violate any of the, uh, FLSA issues or, I guess, Tom, a question to you in terms of, you know, state labor. I mean, I, it, it sounds like we're trying to do something that's pretty, we're being open about it and, and...
Right.
And direct, but let's not inadvertently, you know...
I think it's much more common, you know, for, uh, for people to be paid hourly. When, when, to me, you know, whenever anybody's not exempt and we have to be able to determine an hourly rate in order to calculate overtime, to me, they should be on an hourly rate because, you know, otherwise it creates situations like this. And there's, there's really no advantage for them to be called salary. There, there's, there's no, um, there's nothing they gain by that.
Part of this discussion was, in fact, they are, FLSA-wise, non-exempt and by making them salary, it just kind of muddies the water and confuses it.
Yeah. Are you, are you asking for something or are you giving us information or where are we in this process at this point?
Well, I would, um, like to ask the board's permission to move ahead with converting to this hourly rate. Um, I didn't have a date certain, but, um, you know, obviously, we would make it at the beginning of a pay period, possibly the beginning of the, um, fourth quarter, uh, but I would work with Dominique to make sure that people, you know, are comfortable, have their enough notice and, um, that sort of thing before we implement.
Has she's talked with her staff?
Yes, she talked to them last Wednesday.
Any, any significant negative reaction from that?
She thought it went very well.
Well, from this standpoint, by making sure that they're not exempt makes it very clear that they deserve overtime, you know?
General, I think one of the things that, when we were talking through all of this, this, this is really getting things clearer, but it's the short weeks and then if there's overtime or holidays within the short weeks, it, under the current process, it's pretty cumbersome to calculate all of that out. This will make that real clear so the, the likelihood of employees working that while it's not remote, it's not like this is something every pay cycle, right?
Right.
It, it also sounds like it, there's at least, it's at least possible that when an employee's asked to, uh, work overtime or get called back in, that, that this gives Dominique a tool, maybe not to necessarily, in all cases, get them more money, but to better explain that they're, that they will be recognized for it, that there is a, it gives her a way of doing that, which now is sort of murky at best, it sounds like.
Right, and I feel like now it's a little bit of a distance in it for them to come take up a shift in that short week because they know that the first four hours will be at no additional pay.
Yeah.
So I, I do think it would help her, you know, from a management point of view.
Any, any other questions or comments or issues?
Simple is better.
Yes. Do we need a motion for this or...
Uh...
Well, a motion and a head nod, yeah.
Yeah. Sort of a consensus review that we should proceed accordingly. Keep us posted though, because I mean, I, I think the employees, it's important the employees understand this is...
Right.
You know, there, there is not a, anything hidden under the rug here is best to be indeterminate.
Right. Well, kind of what I'd like to do is maybe come back with a follow-up memo on the consent agenda, just sort of summarizing this and telling you what the effective date will be since I need to work that out with her.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll, I guess, during the work... Hand it to you, Mr. David.
Yes, sir. During the work session, uh, members of the board, this is your organizational meeting. Um, just as a brief footnote, as you recall, we, you all amended your bylaws to say it would be the first meeting in the year rather than a date certain and so. This is your first meeting to have the organizational meeting. I'll call this organizational meeting of twenty, two thousand and nineteen Orange County Board of Supervisors to order. The first action, gentlemen, we have for you is to open the nominations for election of chairman, and I'll take nominations.
Mr. White?
Second.
Mr. White has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? I'll close the nominations, all in favor of Mr. White being chair for the two thousand and nineteen Orange County Board of Supervisors signify an affirmative?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
Didn't help, did it?
Didn't help.
All right.
There's not enough of you.
That was my, two minutes of thing.
Yeah, all right. Uh, okay, well, we'll give her another, another go here. Our next item is, uh, to elect a vice chairman, open the board for nominations, vice chair.
Nominate Mr. Crozier, second.
Motion, second?
That's with one proviso, which is that he can show up on time.
That's what I was going to say. I think you should nominate somebody that'll be here on time.
We're, we're going to get to that a little bit later, Jim. We have a plan.
My watch froze.
All right. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And we have one abstention there, okay. All right, appointment of clerk and chief deputy clerk. And, uh, I guess this can be done together as way this is worded. Uh, the question there is, do we reappoint Mr. David?
Yes.
And Ms. Simpson to those respective positions?
I would make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
With no abstentions, because you don't get a...
First class, thank you, Jim.
It doesn't come with that. Um, okay, determination of the tiebreaker. In the past, we have not done this. Uh, any, uh...
No motions.
Okay, no, no motion on that. We accept that. And now we move to the meeting schedule. You have in, in front of you, cut at that, uh, that includes a couple of budget work sessions and then the one meeting in November.
I move we adopt the, uh, the proposed, uh, meeting schedule.
Okay, a second. I got the motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you have a schedule. And annual review of the bylaws.
Yes, they're still there.
We still have, we still are operating by the law.
I did find that one thing that I was...
Okay, yeah.
Uh, and this would be section K, the end of two, which requires a two-thirds majority should be required to end debate. Uh, there's five of us. Two-thirds majority becomes four out of five, should we...
Which I think is a good, I like that.
It's, it's, it's actually straight out of Robert's rules so that a simple majority can't end debate on the minority. That's actually why you have that two-thirds, so that you can't just buy a simple majority vote.
That was my question, do we want to change it to eighty or is there a reason?
If, if...
Well, it's true that we, mathematically, we can't reach a two-thirds, unless somebody wants to divide their vote.
Right, but, I mean, the way it's interpreted, it's two-thirds, it would take four votes.
So at least two-thirds, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the good part.
The, the only other thing that I've, that I've found that I just raised to your attention, I don't know that we, uh, necessarily have to make a change, but, uh, there's, gee, I lost it now, there, there's a provision that, uh, talks about the appointments to boards and commissions. It's under item three, meetings, A, organizational meetings, and it's in the last sentence, next to last sentence, actually, says appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities shall expire on December thirty-one unless otherwise specified by the term of appointment. Uh, there actually was an occasion because our organizational meeting is later in the month-year, uh, where there was a meeting where, I guess technically, I was no longer the, the representative and so, I don't know whether we should tinker with that language and let it say, as it does previously for other things, carries over until the organizational meeting. It's not a big deal, but it just happened to get triggered. Tom, is that something that...
The only, the only problem is, is where someone's no longer on the board, so, you know?
And that's provided for, that gives you the December thirty-one in that case.
Okay.
Uh, and so, uh, I, I, I think this year was an anomaly, so I'm not too concerned about it, but it, it does, it, it does treat those appointments differently than, uh, than waiting until the organizational meeting. That's my only reason for pointing it out, but I, unless somebody is hell-bent on tinkering with this thing, I'm perfectly fine leaving it alone. But I only...
I think it's safe to say I'm not hell-bent on tinkering with it.
I got that impression.
If you want to tinker with it, I'm not really hell-bent on stopping you, but... Did you feel, uh, did you feel that you were there sort of, uh, out of sorts?
Well, I, I, I've said, no one pointed it out. They didn't make me feel odd.
The only hypothetical I could come up with would be maybe the jail authority, the jail authority's adopting a budget. Uh, the board has not had its organizational meeting to appoint its representative. If somebody is for or against things, I mean, there's some, you know, some mischief.
I don't object to having it continued for, for sitting board members, but you, you also would run into the same thing if it was, I mean, um...
If somebody's term ended and didn't, they weren't, they weren't brought back and then a new person would be installed January first. So I, it, it's cumbersome, but I, I think, I probably, unless otherwise, you know, that deserved, unless otherwise that can make the board.
Jail authority one's not going to happen for another three years, so...
We, we can deal with it next year. It won't happen the rest of this year.
Right.
I, 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 we can just operate under the practice of board members continuing until they're...
Okay.
Well, we don't have any concern, I will add it to the changes for next year to appear on the bylaw suggestions.
There you go. I think that's a good solution. All right, therefore...
Kicking the can.
Excellent can.
Yeah, we, we, we can do that with gusto. Anyone, anyone wanting to make a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Yes.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, bylaws are fixed. Okay, now to the fun part. Mr. Crozier, we have changed your assignments, just ever, ever so slightly.
Yeah.
Items one through fourteen are all yours.
Wonderful. If I remember to go to them, I'll be doing well.
Don't be, and don't be late. Uh, I mean, I looked these over, I, I don't, I, I think we're well-represented on all the outside, uh, commissions and boards and agencies and authorities unless somebody is objecting to, uh, their, their role.
I'd be delighted to, but...
And can find a majority support for that if you...
I, I withdraw that then.
Your withdrawal is noted, okay. Uh, okay, everybody okay with this as is? All right. Repeat if necessary. And as far as I know, there are new, no new assignments, uh, coming up for the year. Let's hope not.
Well, actually, there is one. It's on the agenda tonight, isn't it?
Oh, I, I was considering that an ad hoc committee.
Oh, that's an ad hoc committee?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any of those?
No, sir. I was creating one.
Okay. We don't have it yet.
I was recommending it.
All right, so this will be our committee assignments for the year. All right. If there's nothing else to come before this organizational meeting, I move, your motion adjourned?
So moved.
All right.
Chairman, members of the board, I might suggest we could probably go and can, uh, go into closed meeting because we have, uh, quite a few items. We can work those up until, until five o'clock and then come back down here.
Everybody okay with that?
And then go back up at six.
And then go back up to...
Okay, all right, all right.
So, we, we're, we're rescinding the adjournment or are we just going to actually open our regular meeting? I would suggest we open our regular meeting, but we'll start in closed.
There you go.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Let's call the board meeting to order.
All right.
First item of business will be, close the meeting.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting the following: Discussion, consideration, and reviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, employees, or employees of public body with respect to possible realignment; consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body concerning tax exemptions; consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning computer security, firearms, and the Green County border; discussion...
And you wanted to start this early?
That's an unfortunate juxtaposition, Bill.
Discussion of the order of public contract involving the expenditure.
We, we didn't have a discussion about appointing a new county attorney, but it sounds like we better go back to organizational.
Better hurry up their mass on the border right now.
That's right. Don't put this in the paper, ever.
Involving the expenditure of public funds including interviews of bidders or officers, offerers, and discussion of terms and scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public duty concerning recycling and ambulances; and whereas pursuant to sections two-point-two, thirty-seven, eleven, A-one, A-seven, A-eight, and eight-twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County dishears by authorized discussion of four-state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion?
So moved. What Tom says.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Did you say recycling and ambulances?
I did.
That's rough, too.
Are we in Green County, is that?
I don't know what that's about.
Glad we don't have to repeat that as the making motion.
Wait, we've got our picket man, that's what the chairman says.
We're going to, I guess we're going to recess our...
Recess the closed, yes.
Close and return to it, so. Okay. Since we are back in order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. No changes to the agenda that I'm aware of. Anybody have any? Okay, your motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Adopt the agenda? Motion, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, no special presentations or appearances, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. New business. Allison, first one's yours.
Members of the board, in front of you this evening is an annual request from the Rapidic Rapidian Community Services Board. And closing your packet is a letter from their executive director requesting a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors for their grant funding request, and it is through the Commonwealth of Virginia, Section fifty-three-ten program, and they are looking for, um, grant funding to purchase four fifteen passenger vehicles with wheelchair lifts and a modified minivan with a wheelchair ramp, which as you know will be used for their various, um, transportation programs, and, um, staff feels this is of benefit to the residents to continue providing support because a number of their programs and services are located in Call Pepper and the transportation services are, are utilized by our residents. Um, so what you have in front of you this evening is a draft, a letter of support, and we are seeking, um, your approval or authorization to have the county administrator sign the letter and submit to them to include in their grant submission.
Okay. Second, motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, two downs. Thank you. All right. Lake of the Woods Adaptive Water Sports.
Now, this is, this is a group that, uh, has, uh, basically water skiing, sometimes seated water skiing, stuff like that for, for veterans, uh, for disabled, and, uh, they do that, and they have, uh, a boat and a trailer and a truck, and, uh, they'd like to get a tax exemption as a five-on-one C-three, uh, for their, uh, for their efforts or for those things. That's not too expensive.
Is this a first-time request or...
This is a first-time request.
Okay, I was going to say, I didn't recall this in years past.
No, this is a first-time request.
They've been in existence about three years now.
And, and they're going to ask for a retroactive to cover two thousand and eighteen because they haven't paid their two thousand and eighteen taxes.
Okay.
That'll be a, uh, and, and I'm going to ask them to bring some pictures and stuff like that when they, when we have the public hearing.
Yeah, I've seen some of the, the work that they're doing. It's, they're doing a, they're doing a nice, nice program. Okay, any, any...
I would, uh, sketch, move to sketch of the public hearing.
Okay. Second, okay. Any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and I don't know about the date, uh, February twelfth, is that a good date, Allison, for?
Yes, sir, February twelfth.
Okay, so part of your motion was included in February twelfth, okay, all right. Okay, good enough. Uh, see no old business or Department Director Constitution Report, County's Attorney's Report?
No, for this chair.
Okay, all right, County Administrator's Report, Website Redesign Committee.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you recall at your December eighteenth meeting, uh, we reviewed the county's website and also the upcoming redesign, as you recall. Um, we are scheduled to have and have purchased, uh, through the original licensing with E-CIV, that's right, it was E-CIV.
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus, close. Um, a, a redesign... A redesign. At that time, the board, we had us in a work session, provide a considerable range of thoughts and ideas on improvements and things that should be kept the same. And in reflection afterwards, and Allison and I were, were looking back at this. It probably is going to be more efficient for two of you all to join with Allison and Stephanie. To come up with some prototypes that could come back to the board. I'm afraid we'd start coming up with things and then come back and. This kind of process of going back and, 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 and forth, and I'm not saying back and forth in a pejorative way, but.
Could be.
Certainly not.
But I, I think.
They're getting it took it that way.
I think having two board members to work as an ad hoc committee, this would be a sole purpose, it would sunset once the redesign's been approved by the board, so welcome you all's thoughts.
I think Mr. Johnson should absolutely be on that committee.
And I think, I heard Mr. Crozier volunteer as well.
Yeah, that one backfired. It's fine.
We, we will only just begin.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with that, but.
I do.
No, I, I heard you say.
With who or with you or he? I, I heard a motion in the second. Is it any other discussion on this topic?
Mr. Crozier and Mr. Johnson.
It sounds like we have a website redesign committee.
No, that was Mr. Johnson and Mr. Crozier.
I'm ad, he's ad.
That's right.
Okay, all right. Four County Players.
Yes, sir. Quite a bit of information provided in your agenda memorandum, but I'll try to stick to the, to the high points here. As you recall, Four County Players amended, requested their lease be updated back in two thousand seventeen. Purpose of this was to extend the lease term out through two thousand thirty seven. As you, as was represented back then, I think there's been a long anticipated project to, to enclose the back and extend the backstage area of, of the theater. That lease process went through about a, quite a few months, but we finally were able to get a, a lease completed. I've spoke with Mr. Johnson since this is in his district and really mapped out a, a process to now bring forward this project. We felt there would be really a couple of ways we could go about it, but the most efficient way is I bring it to you tonight. And you all would consider their, their request to make these improvements as required by the lease, but ultimately you all have to approve it. But there are certain conditions, and, and if you all are okay or we can talk, and I know Mr. Johnson probably is going to have some comments, but. I, i- is that there are some things that would have to be done before you all could be in a position to formally. Grant final approval to, to this project as required by the lease, and I'll briefly highlight those. One is that there is an, an easement or a water line and, and there's a property interest that the Barbersville Ruritians have at the rear of the project area. And as I talked to Ms. Owen, the president of Four Counties Players, the, the board, president of the board. She understands she would work out and coordinate this expansion process with the Ruritians to get their approval, essentially. That, that this is not going to impact their, their, their access easements or utility easement to their, their building. The second is that they have to go through the Barbersville Village Overlay District process. And receive all the, the building plans and the permit, permits for those. And then, once they've completed all that, the building permits and everything could be held pending final approval of the board. Then they would come back at a future meeting with everything and an approved, ready to be approved by the, the various permitting folks. And then you all would hear a presentation from them on the project. One other thing I glossed over, this, this project's enclosed the back and there's some concept plans that they have, one of their members of their board or, or their organization is an architect who's doing some. Work for them to do it, and then these were some plans that were presented to us earlier on. Also, Mr. Whip, Jim Whip, our GIS analyst, was able, and Stephanie helped out, helped him out with kind of working through this. But we were able to show you a scaled expansion plans based on our GIS system, which I wanted to kind of, I guess, to, to roll that out, that we now have that capability. And I think it's in a situation like this, it was, it was pretty useful. I'll stop there.
Brian, just so I understand. It sounds like we're, they're, they're going to be going through the, the customary approval process for building permits, zoning permits, those kind of things. And then also we're going to make a, a separate determination as to whether or not. Those permits or those plans as permitted. Meet the terms of the lease. Is that, is that how you see this? Is a, are we, do we mean to set up both of those steps in this process?
I think tonight was to get a sense of the board, are, are you all comfortable in concept with an expansion? Or do we need more information?
Yeah, this, this was just, I just thought it, even though I couldn't imagine the board would be opposed to it. I just wanted to make sure that we, there was not a problem with going forward and then as long as in principle, everybody thinks it's okay, then we'll, we'll go ahead and dot all the i's and cross the t's, et cetera.
Yeah.
Just a question, sort of more curiosity. Does this enlarge the stage or just provide more backstage work?
It does not enlarge the stage. They're, at, at present, they're actually.
Working out.
Changing clothes outside. And I, you know, I don't, I don't want to think about that too much, but when they, when they're swapping costumes, they're running out onto a.
Uh, do a.
Thing that's open.
Outside, okay, that's fine.
They definitely need the space.
I, I hope there was not a show going, you know, last night or this morning.
Or they were very careful about what they changed.
There, there are no residences immediately behind. To, to your question, Mr. White, I think the way I talked to the building official and then certainly in the planning, they would get the plans in a position to issue the permits, but not issue those until you've made final approval. So, but the, the Four County Players understand that they have to go through the process to see that all the required plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'll let Ms. Owen know that we're ready to proceed on that.
Changing costume in the outside is not good, yeah.
Healthy Watersheds?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you all know, we are a pilot community for the phase three of the Healthy Watersheds project. This, as you recall, it deals with forest conservation and as it relates to water quality. In the Chesapeake Bay as well as with air, air quality on the carbon credits side. A workshop was held by the consultants hired by the Department of Forestry at the, or town of Orange's Public Works Center, the community center there last Thursday evening. Mr. White and Mr. Goodwin attended as well as myself. I think we had thirty, thirty-five folks show up. Orange Review, Amber Galvez was there with the paper, but the consultants went through a series of, of workshop tasks for the group. Around water quality, around land use and conservation. The consultant did email me the next day and said that, that they're gathering all the, the work product that came out of these work sessions about what did the group? And it was a pretty wide cross-section of folks in the county. We, we had given invitations or solicited participation from the Farm Bureau. Piedmont Environmental Council, I mean, we were trying to do it. The Chamber of Commerce was also helping, got out and their distribution list, so. I'm waiting to hear back from the consultants. We will review those, those recommendations or what the work product came out of the group. And then at some point, we'll move to the planning commission and then ultimately the board supervisors. Right now, that, that, that was the result of, of that workshop.
The consultant did mention the possibility of a joint work session between the board and the planning commission and I. At this point, I don't think we can judge whether that's the right next step or the planning commission needs to do a piece or what, what the order is, but I think it's. He did, he did mention that as a, as one possibility, so we'll see.
The only other thing that I'll, I'll, I put in my memorandum to, to you all was this legislation that it's making its way through. I haven't checked its statuses. I wanted to do that before the meeting. But this has to do with. Creating this funding mechanism for landowners that would sell credits or having their, their lands used either from air quality, carbon credit stamp approach. Or a water quality approach with, with developers using the. Best management practices for, for water quality, getting some credit. That has been Keith Hodges, delegate Keith Hodges has introduced that legislation. I was asked to provide some, at least review and comment on, on the body of it. It's pretty straightforward. It just allows the. Economic Development Authority to support and facilitate this type of, of program. The details of all, how this would work are way downstream. This is just declaring legislative intent.
And Keith is the chairman of the Rapidanic River Basin Commission, so he's, he's knowledgeable in the, the program. Lives down in Essex County or Rapidanic, one of the.
Down, Middlesex.
Middle, maybe it's Middlesex, yeah, it's, it's in the.
He represents the middle.
Middle Peninsula's area, right.
That, that's all I had, gentlemen.
Okay. All right, board comment. Anyone?
Yes. First and foremost, we were planning to schedule the public hearing on the. Alternative truck rate. For next month. I have a corporate meeting that they informed me about that happens to be, I won't be here, being that, I guess I'm the patron of this thing. We, we need, I believe, to move that until the meeting in March. We talked about moving to the twelfth so that I'll actually be here for it.
Okay.
And number two. To announce that I'm running for reelection this year.
All right.
As am I. I haven't learned the first.
Sorry, you say that again. Could you say that again, Lee?
As am I.
As am I.
Okay, very good.
And?
Okay.
Any other announcements?
Those are great board comments.
Well, I did have something that's more historic and I was going to make you all aware. I was doing a little, little work over at the Orange Review recently. And came across an article from nineteen fifty-one. And it concerns roads. The VDOT resident engineer was at this meeting and. A gentleman by the name of Elijah Poindexter was there and he informed the board that he had been petitioning. The county for a road going out to Egypt. I don't know where that is. I don't know if anybody here knows where it is. But he had been petitioning for the road since before World War One. This was nineteen fifty-one, so. The petitioner explained that it was inconvenient to have to drive back up to Route six eighty-two, which is a dead end in Egypt, Route six twenty-eight, and then around to Madison Run. And he, he asked for a short piece of road completed from the settlement to Mallory's Ford. Road would do just the trick. There were, and there were about forty people at this meeting complaining about roads. Mr. Higginbotham, who was at that time the Commonwealth Attorney, said there were holes a foot deep in the old Gordonsville Road and you could dodge them all day and you wouldn't, can't miss them. There was a petition with nearly four hundred names for improving Route six twenty-nine off of five twenty-two. And C. Cosby Clough added his complaints to the list, asking that something be done about Route six twelve. And then there's a paragraph that says other roads were complained of also, and Mr. Parker, who was the VDOT representative, seemed weary as he folded his briefcase and asked to be excused. The more things change, the more they stay the same.
I, I think we should present Alan Saunders with a copy of those. Just for perspective.
Again, I will give credit to the Orange Review. This was an article from the, in sometime in nineteen fifty-one. Oh, and, and Mr. Wall also was the chairman, the chairman of the time and he, he had some very pithy comments to make. He didn't know how. Any of these new roads are going to be done because VDOT was wasting money on the primary roads, so I'd probably adhered him to the resident engineer as well. I know he's got top that one.
Yeah. All right, any, any other board comment? Anyone have? I hadn't, hadn't really planned to announce what I was going to do, but I guess the.
The pressure's on.
The kitty's out of the bag.
Well, you know, the, 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 the team is still able to be in the same room together. I guess that's a milestone, so. It's probably. Time to acknowledge that and proceed, so I, I guess I'm going to be joining the, my two compatriots. To complete the ballot.
I, I can't wait to see this quote in the paper next week.
We thought our close session agenda was. Your story about roads was, was far more interesting. All right, any other board comments?
We're just going down the same old road.
Yeah. Any questions on the information items? All right. Appointments to the boards and commissions. Any appointments tonight?
Yes, I have an appointment to the Rapidanic Rapidan Community Services Board. Mr. David Francis. He's got his application in and I've talked to him and I'd like to nominate him for that board.
Okay.
He's got a good rack around. He's the guy that basically completely rebuilt the, the Lake of the Woods Lions Club food pantry out there at Locust Grove Center. Real get up, go.
Yeah, yeah.
But since he turned that over, he feels like he's got something else to do.
Great, excellent. Okay, good. Any other? Okay, all in favor of that appointment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, calendar items. Joint meeting with the Extension Service on the twelfth. I guess we have a public hearing also. They were talking about moving and. And the Rapidan one, so we would have to make them aware of the coming back here.
We've coordinated that. We'll probably ask for you all's consideration to recess your meeting here about quarter till five or quarter till six so that you can be at the Extension Office to start promptly at six. And get your timing with them before returning here for public comment at seven and public hearing immediately following.
Should, should we announce a public comment at seven thirty instead of seven? Is that, is that, or you think we can be in all the places?
Um, we haven't discussed length of your meeting with the Extension Office. Typically, we try to have you all back here by seven, but we'll advertise.
I'm just thinking, since we're going to advertise. And there's enough, there's enough time to alert people. I mean, I, I. I think I'd be in favor of buying us an extra half an hour necessarily, because I.
It's a good meeting.
It's a good meeting and the, and the, the presenter is usually.
See rushed all the time.
Yeah, it always seems rushed and I, and I feel badly about that, so I would, I'd propose if it's all right with everybody that we. Add a half an hour to the schedule, okay. All right, any other calendar items? Is that it? Okay. Return to closed meeting?
Need a motion to resume it and a vote?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Resume, closed up. Okay, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters, will fully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Box zero.
Okay. All right, we're past the seven o'clock hour, so I'll open the meeting for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Not for public comment, no sir.
Okay, close the public comment period. We have three public hearings tonight. We have three public hearings tonight. First one is S U P 1801 Self-Storage Facility. Sandra, are you gonna introduce this for us a little bit, or? Okay.
This special use permit application was made by Joseph Daniel Junior on behalf of Michael Murch for the construction and operation of a seven-building self-storage facility on tax map parcels 1236 and 1245, both of which are zoned for commercial, or general commercial use. Both parcels account for an area equivalent to approximately 8.29 acres. They're located adjacent to Route 3 with, within subarea 2 of the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. The future land use guidelines for this property are conservation and open space recreation and mixed-use plan development with transportation corridor preservation, corridor A traversing the northern portion of the property. As I mentioned, the property is located adjacent to Germana Highway in the Locust Grove area. Just, how, how much detail would y'all like from the staff report? Or do you just, do you like just sort of a general overview?
You, you might highlight the conditions.
I, I will, when I get, yeah, when I get there. But is that just summary?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that the type of information you like?
Sure.
Okay. Staff did recommend conditions associated with this application, some of which were recommended by other reviewing agencies. The first is that the two tax parcels be combined prior to approval of the site plan to ensure that the construction complies with all applicable zoning regulations. There were design standards recommended, but one of the conditions was that the standards would substantially conform to the building elevation shown on the general site plan that was submitted with the application. There is a condition recommended that existing trees located within a hundred feet of the Route 3 right-of-way be preserved, excluding those that need to be removed as part of the construction process. And the intention of that condition is to ensure that there is adequate conservation of trees for stormwater management, and also viewshed buffering along Germana Highway. The rear yard requirement for this site is recommended to be a hundred feet, meaning no structures may be constructed within a hundred feet of the rear property line, and existing trees located within this area are to be preserved. The intention of this condition is to ensure that there is adequate buffering between the facility, the proposed facility, and existing or potential residential development north of the property, also to ensure that no structures are located within the transportation corridor preservation corridor A. One of the conditions pertains to allowable exterior materials for the self-storage facility and any accessory structures. The applicant did request some amendment to this condition, such that the masonry would be used, could be used on the ends of the buildings, but not on the sides, because if it is to be used on the sides, that would hamper the operation of the sliding doors. So that was a request that they had made. But in general, the intention of that condition was to ensure that the facility conforms to the high-quality design standards recommended in the Wilderness Area Plan, and recommended by the subcommittee. The exterior color scheme for the self-storage facility and any accessory structure shall not contain a primary use of bright, intense fluorescent or otherwise visually striking colors. And again, the intention of that condition is to ensure that the development aligns with the goals and objectives of the Germana Wilderness Area Plan and the proposed Route 3 corridor district. Another condition pertains to the use of chain link fencing, and it is recommended that uncoated chain link fencing visible from any public right-of-way would be prohibited. And again, that's to ensure conformance with the high-quality design standards that are contemplated for the Route 3 corridor district. Finally, the last condition pertains to signage. Any proposed sign for the self-storage facility shall be monument style and a maximum of twelve feet in height. The exterior materials for the sign shall consist mainly of those materials referenced in a prior condition. And again, that is also intended to ensure conformance with high-quality design standards contemplated for the Route 3 corridor district. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this special use permit with the one amendment to the architectural standards pertaining to the use of masonry on the sides of the structures.
Okay. All right. Any questions of staff at this point? Okay. Thank you. Anyone from representing the applicant that would like to speak to us?
Yes, sir. I'm Butch Davies. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I think staff has already covered the essential points. We worked very hard with staff and at the Planning Commission level to make sure that we could comply with the design guidelines. The one change which we requested was to ensure the ends of the buildings were masonry, that we thought that was important. Going down the sides of the buildings, because of the sliding doors, the, the masonry wouldn't work, and I think they were aware that that was, that was difficult. But we, we concur with what was presented by staff here today, and if you have any questions, Rick Fornival, the engineer from Fredericksburg, is here and can respond to questions, and I'd be glad to do the same.
Any issues occurring as a result of combining the two properties? Is that, is that a straightforward process?
No, that's not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone signed up?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Okay. Any questions or further discussion anyone have at this point?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay.
Just to get the discussion under.
All right. We have a motion in a second. End of discussion?
Yes, and it's probably not really relevant for this particular one, but moving forward, we probably need to look at the sites along Route 3. Potentially leaving trees in the non-construction-related area may actually end up being a detriment in some of these locations. These are, a lot of places, the trees have reached their maturity. They're going to be dying off, and it doesn't really help anybody in some cases to save these trees. They're better off to go ahead and take them down and replant new, more appropriate trees.
Landscaping more like we did with Walmart.
Right. And it's just a thought process moving forward. It occurred to me, looking at this, that, that this is one of those sites that really isn't appropriate for. So we may want to look at that, both at our level and the Planning Commission level in the future.
And, and actually, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but having looked at it before, the, there is language in our zoning ordinance with commercial properties that limit the, the timbering that can take place, and I, I, I agree with you. In some cases, it works exactly counter to what we are trying to achieve, the end product. So that is, that's, that's a good point. We need to factor in our...
But other than that, I, I believe it's a very appropriate location, and based on everything they've done, it looks appropriate to me.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay. Let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frain?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good seeing you.
Take care.
All right. Public hearing number two, rezoning 1803 and S U P 1802 Assisted Living Facility. You have a...
Good night, Butch.
Give us a little introduction here again, Sandra, please.
Okay. The, I guess this will be a concurrent, concurrent public hearings on the rezoning and the staff report, so, I mean, the special use permit. So this zoning map amendment and special use permit application has been presented by Elgin LLC on behalf of Sabre LLC to change the zoning classification of tax map parcel 12-38 from general commercial to multifamily residential for the construction and operation of an assisted living facility. The proposed facility will consist of four buildings, three assisted living homes, approximately seven to eight thousand square feet each, and one adult daycare house, approximately three thousand, four thousand square feet. The subject parcel is approximately 6.79 acres and is located at the intersection of Germana Highway and Somerville Road, within subarea 2 of the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. The future land use guidelines for this property are mixed-use plan development and transportation corridor preservation, dash corridor A traversing the middle of the property. There were conditions proffered by the applicant with the rezoning application. First, the occupancy of these units will be limited to those of, that are ages fifty-five plus, and the whole project will be for elderly, resident, and care. The intention of this proffered is to ensure that this use complies with the definition provided within the zoning ordinance for housing for the elderly or disabled. The second proffered condition, all units will utilize public water and sewer service. And the intention of this proffer is to achieve consistency with the subarea policy stipulating that all new development will utilize public water and wastewater. The third proffered condition is land clearing shall only occur to the extent necessary to install the development as shown on the submitted site plan. A riparian buffer at least fifty feet from either side of any identified stream shall be retained, except as may be needed for stormwater management facilities, utilities, or a road crossing. Complete clearing of the parcel shall not occur. The intention of this proffer is to ensure that there is adequate conservation of trees for stormwater management. So those, those were the proffered conditions, the, for the rezoning. Staff had recommended conditions pertaining to the special use permit application. First, access to the property shall not be provided via Route 3. The intention of this condition is to ensure the viability and functionality of Route 3 as a primary highway in accordance with the Germana Wilderness Area Plan. A second condition recommended is existing trees located within a hundred feet of Route, the Route 3 right-of-way shall be preserved, excluding those that need to be removed as part of the construction process or for stormwater management. The intention of this condition is to ensure that there is adequate conservation of trees for stormwater management and viewshed buffering along Germana Highway as recommended in the GWAP. The, the third condition recommended, the exterior color scheme for the assisted living facility and any accessory structures or permanent signs shall not contain a primary use of bright, intense fluorescent or otherwise visually striking colors. Again, this condition is intended to promote high-quality design standards as contemplated for the Route 3 corridor district. Fourth, uncoated chain link fencing visible from any public right-of-way is prohibited. Again, another recommendation to preserve high-quality design. Another condition, any proposed sign for the assisted living facility shall be monument style and a maximum of twelve feet in height. The exterior materials for the sign shall consist mainly of brick, stone, color-impregnated decorative block, or architectural precast concrete panels. Again, another condition intended to preserve high-quality design along the corridor district. The proposed site shall be generally designed to incorporate future consideration of transportation corridor A, which is planned to connect to the intersection of A and K Boulevard and Somerville Road or Route 711. The intention of this condition is to ensure that the transportation goals of the GWAP are fulfilled, and those are all of the recommended conditions.
Okay. Any questions, staff?
I have one. The one condition, I don't have a problem with it, I just have a question. This is for fifty-five and over?
Mm-hmm.
Was that, was that an intended? I, I, I think coming from Planning Commission, this may have come from the fifty-five and over community, because assisted living facilities typically like this, you might have an eighteen-year-old that may need to go in there, and by judging by the applicants, that's not a condition. I don't think that was an agreed condition from the Planning Commission. I think it may have gotten put into this inadvertently, because that was for the fifty-five and over community across the street.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading from the staff report prepared by someone else.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we caught that.
It's in the proffer statement.
It is in the proffer, yeah, that...
From August fifteenth.
Well, I, I would, if it's acceptable, I'd like to make a motion to remove that from the proffer statement.
Well, ask the county attorney, these are applicant proffers.
Well, you can reject a proffer.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I would... How would we go about that? That, I...
Well, if, if you vote to approve this app, the rezoning, and then subsequently the special use, in your motion to approve, you can reject the, you cannot accept.
So it'd be, I make a motion to approve striking proffer, rejecting proffer number one.
Okay.
When you take that.
Okay. I had a question on, how is it marked? There's a plat showing the, what I take to be the tentative location of the building, and it appears there's an entrance from Route 3, either dedicated as a, as an easement or a right-of-way, or to actually be constructed. And I just, I, when I saw that, I couldn't, I wasn't sure, I, I can't help you with, well, yeah, okay, Allison has it on the screen. You see that?
Is it the one marked boundary survey?
Uh, yeah, you see that coming off of Route 3?
Yeah.
And I didn't know, yeah, I wasn't sure what that was representing, and whether that had been replaced, or what the, what was going on there. I just wanna make sure we get the, the record corrected as to what is planned. And I, I can ask the applicant that question.
Yeah.
It, it appeared to conflict with...
The preliminary site plan that he has does, does not include that access on Route 3.
Okay. Be sure to note that.
There was a condition that there not be.
Okay, right, right. So let's, let's be sure to note that for the record. Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone from the applicant proposing to speak? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this. First, before I go to this one, Mr. Crozier, the idea you said about the trees, can you sell that idea to Lake of the Woods?
I seriously doubt it.
Because all of the houses going under the trees, paying thousands of dollars. Just I thought I said.
Yes.
I'll defer to District 5.
This is the actual site plan working that goes with everything that is on the proffer. And you are right, thirty-five and more is not for this one. I doubt if that's a part of the proffer for this property, somehow there was, because assisted living is for anybody who needs assist. Definitely don't bring the kids in. All I can say, this is very much a needed facility for citizens of... All I can say, this is very much a needed facility for citizens of Orange County. It fits with the GWAP planning, and it definitely adds the tax basis for Orange County without adding kids to the school. One thing I have to say, from the time we presented our first letter and said the building are about 6,000, 8,000 square feet, we ended up knowing that we need more, and the need are more than that. The building are going to be about 12,000 square feet.
A what?
12,000.
12,000.
Because it takes more than...
In the... Either the proffer language, we don't... Do we restrict that in any way? Has anybody noticed? Senator, do you... Okay. Okay. All right. So that estimate is flexible then? Okay.
That's... Actually, the number of the unit can go much more than what we are doing, but we don't go to the... Maybe about 50% of what is allowed with a special use permit. I just wanted to make sure. And we have all...
But that doesn't affect the setbacks and the other things that you're showing on the site.
No, no. All of the setbacks showing over there, exactly. And one other thing that we did that it may need in future, if in future ANK 11 needs to be extended, it doesn't have to go through the buildings. It's just you see that there is an open area in front of that, guess go through the property.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Mr. Doug Rogers.
Okay.
113 Birchside Circle, Lucas Road.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm here to support this application. We're in great need of assisted care at our end of the county. We continue to lose members to Northern Virginia seeking assisted care. In fact, my neighbor, which is 92, just moved to Indiana. She's a 28-year resident of Lake of the Woods with a lot of support and a lot of friends, so I completely support this, and we need it at our end of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Okay. Any questions, motions, comments?
I have a question for Tom. Do we have two separate motions on this, correct? One for the rezoning and one for the special use. On the proffer condition for the rezoning, you got concerned about the 55-plus. What about the rest of that statement, the project for elderly residents and care?
I would move to reject the entire proffer. I don't see anything of any benefit within that proffer.
Then from a zoning standpoint, it can be...
Well, it's an assisted living facility. Let me get back to...
Look at the...
Yeah, proffer.
We're just rezoning it to multifamily. We're not rezoning it to assisted living.
Yeah, the SUP would probably take care of the assisted living aspect.
But if they don't use the SUP, just use the rezoning, they can put any kind of R4 there.
That's correct.
Is that right, Tom?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
What would be the appropriate language to make the assisted... Assisted living facilities? I don't know what the appropriate language would be to make sure that it was a assisted care, assisted living care.
When you were saying the possibility of an 18-year-old or somebody younger, are you thinking of somebody who's in rehab or somebody who's permanently disabled?
Absolutely. And I just used 18 as an example, but...
I'm thinking more of somebody 30, 40, who's permanently disabled, physically disabled, and needs that care.
Right.
Why don't we just say for elderly or disabled resident and care, and drop the first part of that?
That acceptable, Tom?
Would that work, Tom?
Well, the only problem is it's a proffer, so it actually has to come from...
Oh, he has to come. Because I got you.
So we can reject it and not amend it?
You can reject it, but you can't amend it because this is...
Yeah, I understand.
The SUP's conditional zoning, but the rezoning, we can't put conditions on it.
Okay.
We can amend it, can't we?
We can amend it.
Could you reject a portion of it?
We just reject the 55 and plus in age?
May I suggest...
So if we say the occupancy will be limited to those for elderly resident and care?
Well, here's what I suggest we do. Why don't we table this? Let the applicant give a new written proffer, because that's what the law says, it's got to be written. Then we'll... So you can take up your third one, and then we'll come back and vote on this one, and the applicant can submit a new proffer.
In case he just randomly comes up here and hands us a written proffer.
Well, no, that's... Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right. What about the SUP? Any questions or concerns, comments on that aspect? All right. So a motion to table this.
So moved.
No earlier than 7:45?
Yes, so moved.
You don't even need to pick a time. You can take anything off. You can take something off the table anytime. So you're putting it on the table, do something else, and you make a motion.
I'm just trying to add pressure to it.
I'll be darned.
So I make the motion to...
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Public hearing number three is rezoning 1804.
This application is made by Douglas Newman for the rezoning of 2.031 acres of a 2.599 acre parcel from agricultural to limited residential one, so that the entire parcel is uniformly zoned. This action would eliminate split zoning on the property and enable the applicant to combine a portion of the parcel with his adjacent property, which is zone R1. I think when this application was first submitted, the staff had considered this basically a corrective zoning since the property is currently split.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone from the applicant? Want to speak on this one? Okay. If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Close the public hearing. All right. Any questions, comments, motions?
I can approve.
All right. Have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? Any discussion? Okay. All right. Let's do a roll.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, need a motion to take the hearing number two off the table?
All right. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the applicant has tendered a written amended proffer number one that states the occupancy and use of the property shall be limited to an assisted living facility. He has signed it and dated it if it is acceptable.
Did you check the wording on that to make sure it was correct?
Hopefully, we'll get some lawyers to look at it.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something to the discussion? I just, in reviewing some of the material in the staff report, it said the definition that is required to be met is housing for the elderly or disabled. So I'm just wondering if the proffer should include some language about persons with disabilities? Or do you think assisted living covers that?
Well, I think the concern is to limit the R4 use so that he can't... So his R4 use is going to require it be in assisted living facility.
That's all.
Now, I don't know, do we have a definition for assisted living? I did not check that.
If there are definitions elsewhere, that's fine.
Well, it needs to be in the zoning. Can you check that, Tom?
I'm checking now.
Because that's where this thing could hinge on, is what the definition is. Some future zoning administrator will need to...
That's right.
Look at this frame.
You're right. We don't have a special use permit permission for assisted living facilities. We only have housing for the elderly or disabled. So we can call it... Well, I'm still comfortable that assisted living facility, if it's covering elderly and disabled, people will fall into that category.
Yeah.
The proffer is just going to restrict them to an assisted living facility. The zoning ordinance will restrict it to elderly and disabled people. So we're okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that make sense?
Does the applicant understand that distinction?
It's clear.
Okay. What the... The proffer says it will be an assisted living facility. Our zoning ordinance says in that assisted living facility, it'll have to either be elderly or disabled people.
Okay. I move to approve the rezoning with the amended proffer number one.
Okay. I need to ask the county attorney a question.
Okay.
We're still in discussion.
This... We have to reject the first one, correct?
No, it's... That's an amended number one.
It's amended. Okay.
It's an amended number one. We just amended that proffer.
Okay.
Well, I didn't amend it to the applicant. Okay. That's fine. It was just from what you'd said earlier, I thought.
Well, they should do it.
Exactly.
Once he offered up another one for us.
Right.
And I guess the other question I have, are we accepting this amended site plan as part of the application at this point as opposed to the one that's in there that shows the...
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. So we have a new proffer number one and a new site plan. Does this have a date or a number or anything like that I can reference? Does anybody know?
Project number...
January 2019.
And it's a preliminary, it says January 2019.
Okay. All right. Okay. We all... You have the motions and seconds recorded.
Yes, I have the motion, the second, and the amended proffer recorded, yes.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
And Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right.
That's right.
Now we need a motion on the special use permit.
Right.
Right.
I so moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call again.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay. All right. I think that concludes our business for the evening. I need one more motion.
No, no, for the business, I move it.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.